Let's call the meeting to order pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020, Order Suspending Certain Provisions of the Open Meeting Law, GL Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's June 16th, 2021 Revised Order Extending Remote Participation by All Members in Any Meeting of a Public Body. This meeting, the Great Barrington Select Board and Planning Board, will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and our parties with a right and a requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. Pursuant to Mass General Law 7C, 30A, Session 20F, after notifying the Chair of the Public Body, any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting of a public body, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Beginning of the meeting, the Chair shall inform other attendees of any such recordings. This meeting is being recorded by the town, by CTSB, by virtual edge, and other members of the public. Any member of the public wishing to speak at the meeting must receive permission of the Chair. The listing of agenda items are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. So right now, before I forget, there are 13 panelists and 25 attendees. My goal tonight, and Brandy, please correct me or embellish, is that we will start the discussion on the short-term rental bylaw that the Subcommittee has worked on. By no means is this the last meeting we'll have. I don't anticipate any vote tonight by the Select Board at least, and I would say that members of the public will have time to speak, but we would like to do this meeting in about an hour because the Select Board has a full agenda afterwards. So if you don't get a chance to speak tonight or choose not to speak, it's not going to be your last chance to speak. There'll be many other opportunities. So I will turn it over to two people right now. First, Eric, do you want to?
Yeah, so I had been advised to recuse myself from this conversation this evening.
Excuse me, Steve, can you do roll call attendance, please?
I will be doing that next. So Brandy, you want to start with yours?
Sure, we can do a roll call. Jeremy Ega?
Here.
Malcolm Fick?
Here.
Jonathan Hankin?
Here.
Pedro Pajano?
You did.
I know Pedro's here.
I am here.
Okay, and Brandy Nelson, I'm here.
Okay, Select Board, Garfield?
Here.
Eric is here?
Here.
And will be recusing himself from this discussion. Ed?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
And I am also present. So I'm going to turn this over to members of the Subcommittee, and I'll start with Lee. And I'd like, you know, I think we'd all like to hear your points of view on this, since you've done the legwork on it. So Lee, go ahead.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, everyone. First thing, I filed a disclosure of the appearance of conflict of interest with the Town Clerk on November 2nd, and this is due to my employment with the nonprofit organization Construct, which builds and manages affordable housing in South Berkshire County. So just wanted to let you know that that has been filed with the Town Clerk. I wanted to give some context to the bylaw draft that we'll be discussing today. So I'll just say a few words. I think it's safe to say that everyone around this virtual table at least is in agreement that there is a housing crisis in Great Barrington. And the question becomes, what do we do as leaders to address this crisis? And when do we address this crisis? So my answer to this is that we can no longer afford to wait, that Great Barrington has reached a tipping point, and it's time to ask ourselves a couple of questions. One of the questions I was at least asking myself is, are we willing to stand back and watch our local workforce, our seniors on fixed incomes, those of our communities of color, families with kids in our schools, volunteers in our fire department? Are we willing to stand back and watch them be priced out of our community? And also ask ourselves, are we okay with watching restaurants and businesses shut down with staffing shortages due to the lack of local housing options for those that work in the service industry? And lastly, where exactly do we draw the line between putting profit ahead of people? As an elected official representing the citizens of Great Barrington, I felt compelled to take a proactive stance and jumpstart the conversation in addressing the town's housing crisis through the drafting of this bylaw that we'll be discussing tonight. My goals in drafting this proposal were fourfold. Number one, to address Great Barrington's housing supply shortage and issue of artificially inflated rental costs as much immediate impact as possible. Number two, enable primary residents to continue to earn extra money from their homes to help make ends meet with no strings attached, no new taxes, no permit fees, no inspections or no time limitations. Number three, to tackle the negative effects of short-term rentals on traffic, noise, and community cohesion in our neighborhoods. And number four, to address the impact of short-term rentals on housing inequality and looking at this through the lens of people of color, seniors, and those living on low incomes who are disproportionately affected by the proliferation of short-term rentals. This proposal is a result of hours and hours of research, of listening and to reading the concerns of many residents and stakeholders. I studied other municipalities with short-term rental regulations in place, including Lenox, Richmond, Los Angeles, Chicago, Nantucket, Salem, to name a few. I've talked at length with Lenox Town Manager Chris Ketchin about the path that the town of Lenox took in regulating short-term rentals and came out with some very helpful insights about what that town has experienced before and after the regulations took hold. I talked with Granicus, who offers a full-service, short-term solution for local governments in the form of monitoring and compliance software, so I could better understand the issues and the cost of enforcement if this bylaw should be voted in. I also took a deep dive into Great Barrington's 2020 Housing Needs Assessment to better understand the demographics, trends, key statistics related to housing, among many others of hours of research that I did. And I'm very, very grateful to the Housing Subcommittee for allowing me to speak and discuss this with them, so they were very, very helpful. Just a couple of points, and then I'll give the floor to everyone. As I stressed in the Housing Subcommittee, this is not a ban on short-term rentals. There will still be short-term rentals available. It will just be limited to primary residences. This is a fine-based model rather than a fee-based model, meaning that there will be no new taxes for residents, no registration, no inspection requirements, no permit costs. This is self-sustaining and self-funded. The high fines that are in the proposal of $1,000 a day will act as a real deterrent for those looking to skirt the regulations while also paying for the cost of the monitoring software. In addition, my hope is that any remaining revenue can be allocated for the construction of new housing. For those that argue that if this comes into effect that our businesses, our local businesses, will shut down because there won't be any more tourists, my argument is that residents do also shop in our businesses, and they also shop in our, eat in our restaurants. So I feel that that argument is weak. I believe that tourists will still come, and they'll have choices of short-term rentals. They'll just be rented from our primary residences. Enforcement, someone mentioned before that they feel like it's a big evil lurking big brother component. Essentially, the enforcement is nothing more than a high-power Google search, and there's no encouragement of vigilantism or, you know, taking pictures, sneaking around, taking pictures. So it's essentially just a very, very high-power Google search, nothing that none of us couldn't do, and it's cross-checked with our assessor's data. So everything is cross-checked. It's not just listening to the software. It's double and triple-checked. So for those short-term rentals that might be off the calendar because of cleaning, or they're renting it to a member of the family, this will all be cross-referenced. This proposal leads to more integrated forms of housing. So this is really looking at the housing that exists in our neighborhoods. So these are established houses in established neighborhoods, rather than relying on subsidized housing and the taxation that would rely on the building of new construction. A lot of times, because of the economy scale, when we do that, new units are often grouped together in big housing developments, and it can take upwards from five to eight years to come on, to come online. So this is more immediate, and this really works in an integrated form of housing rather than relying on taxation to build new units. But as I mentioned before, the beauty in this is that any remaining revenue that comes from fines would hopefully be used for a housing fund of sorts. Again, this addresses the immediate housing crisis by putting properties on the market and deterring future real estate speculators. Now, some of the questions that people have asked is data, and I received a lot of good insight from Chris Ketchin, who said that at the time when Lenox went through their short-term regulations, they didn't, they weren't aware of the software Granicus that we had found, and also Air DNA, which is available to anyone that is online right now, which is a free program. So just today, I took a look, and I found that there's 207 active rentals in Great Barrington, short-term rentals right now. 190 of those are entire homes. So 190 homes are for rent as short-term rentals at this moment, which represents 92% of all short-term rentals, or entire homes. From those, 80 of those were available between 181 days and 365 days. So that's 80 homes, which based on this proposal would probably not qualify as a primary residence, because they were, they're available between 181 and 365 days. So what I was really trying to do is hone in on how many of the short-term rentals, the 207 active rentals, were primary residences. And although the town is looking into it through the assessor's data, I was able to do a little bit of research today and discover that 80 of those short-term rentals are available between 181 and 360 days. So if we take that as the starting point, and we say that 80 homes are possibly coming onto market, if this takes hold, just as an anecdote, that's 80 homes that could come on the market as long-term rentals or for home ownership. So I'm not relying on this solving our affordable housing crisis. This could be workforce housing. This could be housing for seniors downsizing. This could be for, you know, people starting out. So it's a mixture of, you know, housing coming onto the market. And for those that have short-term rentals that decide not to do anything, they would have to make that decision. Do they just want to sit on the homes and just use it as a second home? Or get some income from it, whether it is that a long-term rental or not? And just finally, just some cost comparisons. If we look at the cost of building 80 homes, if we're thinking about the cost of that versus releasing 80 homes into the market through short-term rentals. If we look at the basic cost of building a home at 200 square feet, $200 a square foot, and a typical 1,500 square foot home that might have three bedrooms, that could cost at least $300,000 per home to build. So that's, you know, looking at a price around $24 million to build 80 homes. So I do recognize that we want to build more housing, and I think that this is a multi-pronged, this is part of a multi-pronged effort. So this addresses the need to build housing, but it doesn't just rely on, you know, coming up with that amount of cash, amount of subsidy, and waiting, you know, the five to eight years for it to come online. So the beauty in this is that these homes exist in our neighborhoods. They're integrated, they're homes that could be owned by people that live and work here, and that it does make sense with the economy scale to do it, to focus on this as one prong of a multi-pronged effort into increasing the housing supply. And just lastly, some key takeaways that I received from the Lenox Town Manager is that they've seen in Lenox that traditional lodging has seen an increase in business and investment since the regulations took hold. Now, whether we attribute that to the short-term rental regulation or not, we don't know. He couldn't say, but he thought that that was very interesting. So this could help traditional lodging in some ways, because the focus would be more on balancing that out. And they took a way of balancing their regulations at limiting the amount of days that you could short-term rental. So theirs is based on a 75-day limit, and you could apply for a special term, a special permit to increase that number. So that was based on really the tanglewood season and the thought that by limiting it to 75 days, this would deter people that are using it to make a profit, that 75 days isn't enough time for someone to buy a property solely as a short-time rental. So that's, there's other things I learned in that discussion, but I was grateful that I was able to get a little bit more stats and data since the last time I talked to the Housing Subcommittee. So I'll stop talking now, and thank you for giving me some time.
So a quick question? Yes.
Yeah.
Just on the presentation, the goals that you laid out are not the same as the goals that are in the proposal we were given? Have they changed?
No, no, no. It's pretty much the same. It's just a different way of speaking.
Well, they weren't actually the same as the goals. So the goals in what we were putting, given the package, those are the actual goals?
Yes, the ones that, actually, yeah. I mean, if you discouraging real estate speculation, I mean, it's just a different way of saying the same thing.
Okay, I don't think so. That's why I'm asking, which is the right one?
Well, what specifically are you asking?
I don't remember, because I heard of some of them for the first time.
Okay, well, what I was saying is that...
No, I got, I got, as long as what you have in the package.
Yes, yes. It does the same, it achieves the same goal.
Members of the Subcommittee or Planning Board or Select Board, comments, questions? I'm sure there's a lot.
I have a question. Lee, why did you reject the idea of a revenue or fee-based approach as opposed to what you described?
Yeah. One reason was that I felt like, felt that residents are tax burdened, and to add another tax on them or another fee when there, a lot of times, people are renting out their homes for short-term rentals because they actually need the money. So I felt like to penalize primary residents by adding fees for what they're already doing would be burdensome. So that was one of the reasons.
So following along Malcolm's question, though, how, what's the mechanism to make this work, Lee? That's the part I didn't understand from reading the bylaw.
So the mechanism is relying on this compliance and monitoring software that is used. It's been tried and tested all around the country. This would, we would be able to monitor all the short-term rentals. So for example, right now, I'm looking at a dashboard, and I can see where the 207 rentals are. So we would be cross-checking that data with our assessor's data and see if it's a primary residence. If it's not a primary residence, that would be flagged, and that would not be in compliance. And we would send a letter out asking them to comply with a certain amount of time, which the details of that are being worked out. If they fail to comply, then that's when the fines kick in. So this would be cross-checked with our assessor's data, which would show us what is a primary residence and what is not.
So if, if we could just run through like a scenario, right? This is when the Planning Board starts looking at things like this, we're trying to run through scenarios. So if I decide I want to move out of my house for the six weeks in the summer, go stay with my in-laws, and the system, and I post my house on VRBO or Airbnb, this, this system says, oh, that's her primary residence, it's available six weeks, there's no violation. So I don't get a letter. Is that what you're telling me?
Correct.
But if I buy a house down the street, and I make that available for short-term rentals, it's saying how many days available versus, tell me how this part works?
Well, we would check, we would check to see if that's your primary residence. You can only have one primary residence. So we would cross-check that if you have another one. So if it's not your primary residence, it would be easy to have that flagged. So if it's not, if it's your, if it's an investment property or a second home, even if you are a resident here, that would be flagged as not being your primary residence. So that...
So it's an investment property, it has to meet two criteria, it'd be a second home and be rented out on Airbnb or VRBO or whatever this Granica system is checking?
Well, it doesn't just check Airbnb. It checks community boards, it, you know, has 200 points of checking. So it goes far and wide.
But it's, it's looking for some signal that you're using.
Exactly. So it would flag it. So we have a dashboard, and we would set, in their, in their presentation, they would, they would set what's the levels of compliance. So we would have software that says, okay, if it's not, you know, it would give us a dashboard flagging short-term rentals. And then it would be the town, it would be on the town to cross-check that with our assessor's data to see if it's a primary residence or not. And if there's any question whether that is, so a definition of a primary resident would be someone that's spent six, at least six months here. So if there's any question, we would request this person to come in and show three examples of proof that they are indeed residences, that this is their domicile. So that could include taxes that show this address, this Great Barrington address with it. It could be a driver's license, it could be voter registration, so it would be three points of proof that you would have to show.
Okay, I have more questions, but I want to make them for other people.
I have a question on that line.
Yeah.
The fine is per day, per day that it's rented or per day that it's listed?
Listed.
So...
Because you're not supposed to list it if you're, if it's not your primary residence.
We can make it illegal to list something on Airbnb even if you never book it? Nobody's ever there?
Well, if you're listing it, you're trying to book it. So we're not supposed to be listing it.
Right. So we can make it illegal to, I mean, it seems, whether it gets, ever gets rented or not, you're, they would be violating this law?
Well, the regulations would be very clear that if it's your, if it's not your primary home, don't advertise it. So why would they be, why would be they skirting it if they know it's...
It's, I don't know why, but I guess my question is, how do you prove it's been rented?
It's not, it's, if it's advertised.
So this would make it illegal to just list it?
Yep.
Just words on a board are illegal?
Yep.
Okay.
What if you're in between tenants, and you have something listed? Does that potentially flag you? So my investment property normally has a family in it, but they moved to, you know, North Carolina, and I go to list my property again, is it, is it going to get flagged?
So it's your primary home that you...
No, my investment property.
Okay, so the moment that you use your investment property as a short-term rental?
No, I just have it list, I just have it listed for a new tenant. I want a long-term tenant. So I post on, you know, community board that I have a three-bedroom apartment available.
Yep. So if it's over 30 days, it's a long-term resident. It's a long-term rental. So anything over the 30 days is a long-term rental. You can do whatever you want.
I think I'm trying to understand. Yeah, I'm trying to understand how the software sorts through, and can you give me the spelling on the software?
Yeah. G R A N I C U S, I believe.
Thank you.
Granicus. And I'm on Air DNA right now.
The members of the Subcommittee, Pedro, Jonathan, Garfield?
Yeah, I get two things. I think what Ed was getting at is that if you list a property for a short-term rental, you haven't really broken any laws. You break the law when you rent it. I think that's what Ed was trying to get at. And I'm not sure that there's language in your bylaw that says if you list it...
I mean, that would be something, I guess, we could, you know, I asked that question to Granicus in terms of things flagging it. I guess we wouldn't have to enforce it, you know, that would be something worth discussing. I just don't know why someone would list something without the intention of renting it.
Yeah, it's not about that. It's about the law and how it would work, right? Because you're still not doing anything illegal.
Well, then you get into, then you get into the kind of enforcement that peeking in people's windows to see if, if they're just listing it just to list it, or there's actually someone, you know, renting it. So it makes it harder for us to determine...
Which is Ed's point, which is Ed's point and my point.
That's my concern, is that the only way to know that they're actually renting it is to peek in the window, and we then have to set up some sort of a court with due process. You can't just say, you're doing it, you're fined, right? They have to be able to present evidence and appeal. And again, I'm not a first-tier lawyer, but I can imagine you can make it illegal to put words on a billboard.
Sure you can. That's what, unless, what I was gonna say, unless we add some language to that effect in the bylaw, you can make...
Yeah. And if you notice, in the, in the proposal, we have, I have a note saying that we are looking, that's going to be redrafted, that section. So there is some details on that level that we will, so... That would definitely have to be spelled out.
My other question to you was about comment you made about speaking to Lenox about data?
Yes.
Can you elaborate on that?
Yeah, yeah. So, so when I was talking to Chris Ketchin, I mentioned Granicus, and I mentioned Air DNA, DNA for the research that I found, and they're strictly using Department of Rental lists that, you know, all short-term rental...
Department of Revenue?
Yeah, yeah. The DOR, they're supposed to, did I say that? Sorry, I said something else, the DOR, that they're supposed to provide when you are a short-term rental operator. So they are strictly using that and doing spot checks, whereas I explained to him that we have this other monitoring software that is a bit more sophisticated and that would really, that would scrape data off the internet and have a higher level of being able to cross-check against assessor's data.
But did they, did they gather any kind of data before they put together their bylaw?
Just anecdotal. So again, you know, there's not a lot of data. I mean, it was based on, you know, the feeling that community cohesion was at risk, that, you know, similar to the, some of the, the same issues that I brought up. They have a little bit of different demographics, I believe, that they, when I asked him, I think he said that he thought they had 30, and don't quote me this, but he thought they had about 30% of second homeowners in Lenox, and I think Stockbridge has 50% of second homeowners, and their area median income is higher than ours. So we have, you know, we can't kind of compare apples to apples, I don't think. A lot of our residents, I find, actually rely on short-term rentals to make ends meet. Over there, maybe not so much. So they felt that limiting to 75 days was enough. So, and the jury's still out. I mean, it's only been two years. The only, you know, evidence, or hard evidence he could see in terms of any changes, they haven't had any complaints. They've only had two, I think he thought, maybe two requests for short-term permits to extend it over 75 days. And he did mention the increase in revenue and investment in traditional lodging, which I think was interesting. So this, you know, could have a positive effect on helping our traditional lodging owners.
Jeremy? If I, if I can follow up real quick, Steve?
Yeah, of course.
So my, my understanding is that the difference between their law and the one you're proposing is that they, they do allow second homeowners.
Correct.
Not non-primary. So they don't have any data as to whether or not homes have actually converted into the market and become available to the market. They don't have that, any information on that, right?
Yeah, yeah. So it's across the boards, limited to 75 days. So, so the issue is that if we looked at, you know, residents here that, let's say, snowbirds or people that work in camps that might, you know, go away for, for three months in the summer, you know, that, that might not be enough time. And, you know, I recognize that our population might be a bit different, that they really, really rely on that revenue. So that's why I was willing to, you know, not have that limit, thinking that it might be more beneficial to our primary residents that really rely on this income.
Jeremy, go ahead.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes, yes.
I'm not using my normal headset. So Lee, with the software, is it just, so is, am I correct in that it can, it's more easily tracked listings rather than actual bookings? And is, so the software doesn't have an easy time with booking?
Yes, it does. It, so it looks at, you know, calendar, so, you know, it goes deep. So it can look at listings, it can look at calendars, so they, they compare, let's say, on this day, it was listed, you know, the next day it wasn't, or the calendar was blocked. And when I ask the question of, you know, what about the short-term rentals that are blocked for cleaning or blocked because of, you know, family visiting? So they're able to kind of go deeper if there's any questions with that, or if there's, it's been questioned. So yes, they can look at what's actually booked and rented, as opposed to just listed. Um yes, they can look at at what's actually uh booked and rented, as opposed to just listed.
But is, so what I, mainly what I was trying to get at is, so is the data on like what's actually booked, is that harder to get to? Than the data of what's listed, I mean, it seems like it.
Yeah, they have, uh so they showed us um different things that they use, so uh sometimes they have um lately use Google Street View. So they can see, you know, outs- outside the house, um they, you know, have different ways, so they they showed us various forms of of. Enforcing and how they monitor.
Before I open it up to the to the public for citizen speak and questions, any anyone else from the boards, please go ahead?
Yes, please.
Yes.
I would like to say, untruthfully, I support this fully. Um I got a letter from, or an email from Mr. Peter Frank, who uh, as I suggested, this might be a little bit like affirmative action. It is not, but the same type of peoples that it affects will be affected here. Um Lee has not mentioned anything about people not being able to have further their income, as long as it's a, it's their residence. Um I am an elected town fish, I do feel that it's my duty to try and protect the people of Great Barrington. Uh and I think she's had some great ideas and ways to do it, so I do indeed fully support it.
Jonathan, go ahead, please.
Yeah, um, you know, I I salute Lee for doing this and I certainly. Uh support the notion behind it, although I have a lot of concerns about unintended consequences. Uh first of all, this is obviously gonna be very contentious at at town meeting, uh secondly. Um. You know, I'm a, I'm a real estate broker and I see a lot of people who will not buy. In Great Barrington because of taxes, uh you know, they're open to Monterey or Egmont or Alfred. All of which have fiber optic and also have taxes at a third or half of what ours is. And, you know, is this going to make our town even less desirable? Uh and secondly, you know, if. I'm just, I'm not convinced that if this were to pass, that these units that we would suddenly be. Banning, as it were, um would in fact come on the market. Uh or become long term rentals, um. You know, which would be, which would be great, uh if they did, but I'm not sure how many, if any, will and. You know, when you, w- will that offset uh the negative consequences?
I ask you a question, Jonathan?
Sure.
Um, so are you saying that these people would would elect not to rent it out at all? Like they wouldn't seek money from long term rentals, they would just sit on it, that they would have the the wherewithal? And capacity just to not do anything with it?
Uh I, to be honest, I have no idea what they would do, uh I think there's certainly a chance. As was evidenced by the discrepancy between the number of units that are registered with the state. And the number of units that appear on these apps, uh there are people who do not register with the state. And I think this would probably just drive more units underground.
Mm-hmm, well, the beauty in that, at least in the presentation that um uh I was on with with Chris and Pedro. Um they are aware of that um underground phenomena, so they um is sure, you know, reassure us that they are able to um. To do the the extra research that it would take to uncover people that do go underground. Um but it isn't if you say that, you know, there's eighty homes right now that are being operated as short term rentals that. Are being operated out of non-primary homes, um even if you use half of that, you know, the margin of error, you take forty. I mean, that's forty homes that could come on the market, I, you know, I have a hard time believing that people that have bought these homes um. You know, have bought it just solely to make money, I, you know, I think that they would have a choice, that they would still want to make some kind of revenue. So um that they would, you know, move into the long term rental market, or they would sell it. And either way, it adds to our supply, and really, the 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 crux of the problem here is that there's um a supply shortage. And this is one way of addressing that, so whether it's affordable housing or workforce housing or high end housing, there's just not enough housing. And when we have uh real estate speculators coming in and snapping up all the housing, it doesn't really leave a lot of room for for residents and workers here. So I'm just addressing that the housing shortage, really, and I have a hard time thinking that all those eighty units. Uh people will just sit on and and not do anything with it, so I think they'll have a choice, you know, they'll have three choices, they could sit and do nothing with it. They could uh make it into a long term rental, or they could sell it, so either way, um I, you know, two out of three choices is gonna add to our supply.
Brandy, go ahead, and then Jeremy.
Sure, real, just real quickly in response to the housing shortage, Lee, I mean, the whole reason that the subcommittee was formed was to address housing issues. And so, you know, I want to echo Jonathan's thanks to the subcommittee for working on this. You know, I think as a community, we have to take a a careful look at ourselves, because we've had many housing projects come up on the table. Um and we get a lot of community pushback on um on build new housing projects. And I think we as a community have to take stock of the fact that we have a housing shortage. And find ways to build projects that will allow people to live in our community, and I I feel that that's, that's something we all have to take responsibility for. Um because a planning board can put zoning in place and the select board can do tax incentives, but if the community is rejecting new housing. Then then we're gonna continue to be where we are, um just just furthering that, though, um. The subcommittee has put this bylaw together, if it's a bylaw, it's gonna come to the planning board for review. Um what I'd like to know, though, is, can you just give us a little bit of background for the purpose of the public? You guys have been working on s- on this and having these conversations for many months, so how did we come to um short term rentals? As part of the housing subcommittee's um discussion and and final work product? And did you look at any other ways to address short term rentals outside of this um fine based proposal? Such as permitting or licensing, and if so, why did those go to the wayside?
Well, I can speak to why this is the first thing that's come up after the formation of this new committee. Um when we first met, you know, I brought before the two new members of the committee um issues that we had been talking about before the. Pandemic put a pause on our activities, and simply this was the one that um that. You know, the the members of the committee felt strongly about, that's why, why it's on the table, um. The the registration bit, I think I'll at least speak to that, uh you know, it's it's a hard bit and it's not, I don't think guaranteed. To uh to to really um be an effective tool, but I will add that that one thing that we. Most definitely should discuss and maybe even add to this, well, I thi- I don't know if we can add to this bylaw, but at least have a discussion that the state allows us to. Uh charge an extra three percent to short term rental renters or rentals. That can be used specifically for affordable housing, and our town is set up with the trust. To um, you know, to take care of those funds, so I just wanted to add that, I'll turn it over to Lee, so she can talk a little bit more about um. Your second question regarding registration.
Uh, yeah, so I was mindful of the article that came up on the warrant a couple of years ago. Uh with registration and that being turned down, um and my thought was that. In order to uh get this through the voters and and really um stress that this is not to penalize. Residents that are relying on uh the revenue from short term rentals, that we're not trying to um, you know, just to go in on their privacy concerns. Or or force them to do something that they're not doing currently, so I felt that because of the power of this compliance software was such. That I felt like we didn't need to have the that registration requirement, whereas a couple of years ago, we weren't aware of Granicus, we weren't aware of. Air DNA, as as far as I know, um I guess, cause Chris probably could speak to that, Chris Rimble. Um so this is a bit different because we have the power of this compliance software. And we don't need to rely on the registration, we also have the D O R's registration too, so uh you know, in some ways, we're we're just duplicating efforts. Um because short term rental operators are required to to register with the D O R, um so I didn't feel like this was um specifically needed at at this stage.
Jeremy? Go ahead, Jeremy.
So, uh, so I I have, um I I I wanna applaud the committee as well, I mean, I. I have been thinking we should have been working on short term uh rentals for a long time, um. I do have some concerns about, um you know, I I don't know if we can lump um speculative um. Purchasing a property together with like traditional second homeowners, um where they have the second home. And they, you know, and they want to maybe rent it out short term when they're not gonna use it. And they want the flexibility not to have someone in there monthly, so that they can just lock out certain times, so they can come up and break it off. Um and part of that is like uh through uh the pandemic, we've we've seen um. I think part of the increase in the population that we got were second homeowners that decided to make uh this their primary home. Um and also, as time goes by, I think it's gonna be difficult for some of these like traditional second homeowners. To be able to hold on to these properties, and so having the option to do some, you know, and maybe limiting that. And maybe setting something up that's different in a fee structure where it's different if you're like, you don't pay a fee. If I really, I, what you said, Lee, about um the, you know, um uh primary residents that are really. Uh tax burdened and, you know, just ho- uh just burdened by um keeping up with their home. Um I I I think that is totally a real thing, and I I applaud you for not um for. For the idea of not taxing them, um but I but I wonder if we should then, you know, further differentiate. Between, you know, I don't know what we call them, traditional second homeowners that, you know, have, there's. If there's some way we can prove that they're actually using the property as their second home and, you know, or whatever, um. Uh and uh. One more thing, I'm sorry, I lost it, so.
Thanks, Jeremy, Ed? Thank you, um I I wanna say, first of all, I absolutely agree with Lee that I don't think anyone disputes the fact we've got a terrible housing problem. Um, you know, and I think the committee has done a very good job stating the problem, my fear is, given the fact that we have no numbers. Um and even the number of how many units there are, I was at both of your committee meetings on this, and different numbers were given both times. And tonight, uh you got different numbers, um we really don't know. What the um rental situation looks like, so in in an absence, we're just telling stories. So there's this, you can tell the story of um, you know, corporations or wealthy investors who are setting it up just to do this. And kicking people out of the local, or you can tell the story of that Jeremy was just talking about with um. You know, not all second homeowners are wealthy, so this enables them to do it and be part of our community that way. Um I assume there would be other opportunities, because I've got an awful lot of questions, most of them about what are the numbers. Um. And and if you, just, I was gonna say this anyway, so I'll answer that question, after this meeting, uh Brandy and I and Chris and Mark will. Plot out strategy to move this along, so yeah, there absolutely will be questions from board members and questions from the public and comments. We will take some comments tonight, but th- this is just the beginning, so absolutely. There's just one, and I assume a fair number of people who who want to speak are in the business, they can check my numbers. But according to the.
At your connection.
According to um. The median home price is three hundred and sixty, you did, am I gone?
Uh you're back now for a moment, yeah.
Turn off your video, Ed.
Okay, well, does that help?
Yeah, it takes.
So on a three hundred and sixty thousand dollar home, mortgage, taxes and insurance is about two thousand a month. Um if the rent, you know, not counting maintenance costs, major repairs, vacancies, non-payment of rent. Um i- i- if the rent is thirty five hundred a month, three thousand five hundred a month, that gives the landlord eighteen thousand dollars a year. Or a five percent return on investment, again, that's if there are no maintenance costs, no repairs, no vacancies. No tenants who stop paying rent and take a year to get evicted, so I I I, again, applaud the idea. My fear is this won't do what we think it'll do, I think the goals are really ill defined, there's no numbers. How many units are we looking to get on the market, we don't even have that number, um. So how can we judge how likely this is to be successful, we don't even know what we're trying to do, so I would love to see more work go into the goals of this. That explains, you know, what we're trying to do, um then we can evaluate if this is likely to do it, um. Uh I've I've got more, but I'll I'll hold off on that, thank you. Lee, just briefly, yes, just briefly.
Um, so Ed, thank you for your question, in response to that, um we do have the data, so if it's a moving target, it fluctuates. But we know that it's between, you know, the hundred and ninety to two hundred and ten active listings.
Right, but we don't know, we don't know how many of them are corporate owned purchased for this versus second homeowner, we don't have that information.
Okay, can I?
Thing we need to get is, I I didn't know this was a debate, I'm sorry.
No, 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 I'm ju- I'm just trying to e- explain my situation, um so that is being investigated, and with the data that I was able to find. Uh there are eighty homes, approximately eighty homes that are being uh rented out um from the data that we see now, um that are. Most likely to non-primary, now obviously, um we can, we can dive in more into those numbers, but even if you take half of those.
You've just made up half, right, you've made up a.
It's it's conversation, Ed, I'm not having an argument with you, I'm trying to understand, I'm trying to understand that, it's not.
Hold on a second for both of you, please, but let's move ahead with this with Jeremy, we're gonna have other meetings, we're not having a debate tonight, so Jeremy, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I just wanted to echo what my other thing I forgot earlier, is I, I mean, I sort of said it, but I wanted to echo what Jonathan had said. Is that, you know, we don't really know how many of these um will come on the market for long term uh rentals. And that, that's difficult, right, like that's the thing, like we have, and we have to make that assumption, but. You know, but we don't really know, and so, I mean, yeah, so I I. You know, like that part is gonna be very difficult to determine.
But the alternative is doing nothing.
I'm gonna open this up to the public now, we're gonna have, need to state your name and address, we'll give you two minutes to speak. This is just the beginning, so we, um you'll have more time at other at at other meetings. So we'll start with the first person other hand up was Claudia Lasley. Just unmute yourself, state your name and address, please.
Hi, my name's Claudia Lasley, twenty nine Benton Avenue in Great Barrington, just super briefly, I just wanna clarify that the renters. Pay the short term rental tax, not the homeowner, so I just wanted to clarify that, I think that was misspoken earlier. Um and really, my question is that, or my comment question is that, you know, I started, as we talked before, uh I have a company. That does higher end vacation rentals, I started the company basically because there are so many second homeowners hu- uh home. Second homes just sitting empty, and I looked around, I thought, you know, these these homes could be occupied. Um so to take that option away from the second homeowner, just I I don't see how in the world that's gonna uh. Provide more affordable housing, and you know, the the, it's it's, and if you switch to thirty night minimums. Or thirty one night or sixty night minimums, I don't know how that also uh provides more affordable housing or long term housing. So that's my comment, I really appreciate all of the good work that everybody has put into this, it's super important, and um just thank you. And let's keep talking about it.
Thank you, Peter.
Hi, uh can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh hi, uh my name is Peter Frank, sixteen Lakeview Road in Great Barrington, and I just wanna say that. I think that this is a hugely indirect response to a pressing problem, I think that it's basically. Uh low hanging fruit by trying to go after people who don't live in town, who actually will not have. uh, low hanging fruit by trying to go after people who don't live in town, who actually will not have a chance to vote on this because they may not have voting privileges. But if the uh objective of the town is to um, create more affordable housing, why don't they just figure out ways to create affordable housing? As opposed to this convoluted like land grab um that you're proposing, where you take property rights of people who are legitimate homeowners and then um telling them that they don't have the ability to maintain or, you know, keep their property because their um chance of defraying costs is taken away from them. And it just seems like there are so many creative solutions that are uh possible. I understand what Brandy was saying, that the community has been um um blocking housing, but maybe that you could take um taxation from short term rentals and put it into a land trust or try and alleviate taxes on some of the people who own these houses so their burden is isn't so great. It it just feels like it's low hanging fruit and picking on a uh, element of the community that can't fight back because they don't vote. And it's bad, as Jonathan said, it's bad for real estate property uh values. And I think that the second homeowners and the short term rentals are fantastic for the town. I think the town has never been healthier in my ten years of living here. I see downtown totally packed with people. And what is, no one is talking about the effect that this will have on businesses where, you know, the amount of business in town is gonna be decreased. Rents are still gonna stay high in the in storefronts. And the storefronts are gonna go empty again because no, the the stores can't stay stay there because they don't have the the flow of people. I just think that this is a completely convoluted and indirect response to a pressing need.
Thank you. Craig Okers from Lang.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, how are you guys? Craig Okers from Lang, forty eight South Street in Great Barrington. I did a little research on um the amount of um workforce and affordable housing we have in town now and what's proposed. And right now we have two hundred and fourteen units that are occupied. And I'll be glad to share that table with you. And there's another sixty eight to seventy four in the future in the next two to four years. And I really gotta applaud all those different efforts that we're doing. And I am totally in support of having uh an additional tax that Pedro mentioned that we can opt to put in on the short term rentals and put that all towards affordable housing. We have some great groups doing this now and that would be wonderful. And the second comment I got are just a question. No one's talked about what the um total fees are that are collected by the town from short term rentals. I haven't heard that mentioned. Does anyone have that for the last three years?
We do, and we'll bring it up in a future meeting, Craig.
Great, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me, if I get a, Ray Neal?
It's uh, it's Ronnie L. My name is, uh, actually
I apologize.
Okay, um, my name is Veronica Devi Lender. I will at the onset say that, uh, I live mainly in New York City. Um, I do have a home in Great Barrington as well as one in Sheffield. Uh, we split our time four days a week in the Berkshires and three days a week in New York. So um, I think it's fair to say that I'm not a primary resident in the Berkshires, but I would like to say that first, affordable housing has been a problem in the Berkshires uh, that well predates, you know, this emergence of short term rentals and it's, you know, it's rapid expansion. I know that when we got married in the Berkshires fifteen years ago, it was a problem then. Um, my husband and I decided to buy the house in Great Barrington because of our love for the community and the fact that this house was in the middle of a gut renovation and left practically falling down for well over a year. Nobody interested in buying it. We bought it, we fixed it up and decided to rent it out on, you know, Airbnb and have that short term market. But, you know, I don't feel, I I don't wanna reiterate what the others have said about the numbers and the need for additional clarity on that. But I would like to point out that I don't know how well you can quantify how much money we actually bring in to the community. We pay close to a thousand dollars a month to an individual and her staff to help clean the unit. We pay landscapers and gardeners every week to maintain our property. We spend over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars with local contractors to improve the property that was falling down. We direct all of our guests to local businesses on Railroad Street, to the co-op, to everything that's around. And I don't know how it is that you you will quantify that. You know, I agree that affordable housing is a huge issue. And frankly, would have no issue paying an additional impact tax because I would like to see money going directly to affordable housing. But the fact is, if um homeowner, homeowners like my husband and I, who are clearly not primary residents, can't um rent this out as short to rental, it's a house. It's not going to be affordable rental housing for someone. It's just gonna go on sale. It's gonna go on sale at a high price point. And, um, I think it will be a reduction of tourism to the area. The only other thing I'd say is that in in the last very briefly, on the last call, you know, there was an indication that people like us are just, you know, money hungry speculators. Just have lots of money and bringing that in. The fact that we bring tourists to the community doesn't just make us speculators. We also contribute to the community. We give money to projects. We give money to charities.
Thank you very much. Uh, there are five more people with their hand up. I will let all five speak. So the next one is Sarah, Sarah Dixon.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Sarah Dixon and I live at two fourteen Pine Street in Housatonic. Um, I just wanna make it abundantly clear to everyone that it is not the homeowners that pay the taxes or fees. It's the renters. So having these in place wouldn't impact or raising them by doing that three percent impact fee would not affect the homeowners. Um, I also wanna point out that, and I know you said later on, we'll get the amount. But the town has been collecting a short term rental fee since July first, two thousand nineteen. So that's two years, three months. And I speculate that there's a significant amount of funds available that aren't being, you know, used or, well, I won't speculate anything, but I just wanna say that there is a kitty, I imagine, somewhere that could be used to be creative. And like, I just wanna say, you know, we've got the Thornwood Inn that's on the market right now for one point three nine million. Like, instead of taking and restricting people's, you know, current properties, you know, this is just my, I'm throwing out there a way of being creative and maybe getting the board and the committee to kind of think outside the box. And that's it.
Thank you, Sarah. Tony Segal?
Hi, good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. Uh, I, Tony Segal, I live at, uh, three fifty four North Plain Road, uh, in Great Barrington. Um, uh, I'm sure many of you may know me, maybe not. Um, I am a, I'm a local Realtor, just like Jonathan. Um, and I think there's a lot of good points being raised here, but I have to stress, um, tremendously, I I I think we're, we're not looking, we're not thinking as if it's twenty twenty one. We're all thinking like it's nineteen ninety. People do not travel like they did in the nineties. Um, I can say from my own experience, we are a family of three. We have a young child. We spend a lot of money in this community between taxes, schooling, utilities, you name it. Um, sorry, that's besides the point. But what I'm saying is we we've changed the way we travel. The only way that we travel is in short term rentals, whether we're in Europe, whether we're in Florida, uh, the coast of Maine. We don't stay in hotels. We don't stay in B and Bs because it's very inconvenient to the way we travel. And there are a tremendous amount of people that come to this community that only stay in Airbnb's short term rental. So if you take that away from people, they are going to move on to another town. Uh, I feel very strongly about that, especially in the winter months. Uh, we have a very, very large uh flow of people that come just to stay at Butternut. I can tell you, my units are full all winter. People that wanna be within five minutes of the mountain. If we take that away, they will go to Hillsdale, they'll go stay in Egremont, they'll go eat at the Old Mill, they'll go eat at John Andrews, they'll eat they'll eat at Rojan, they'll go to Catamount, or maybe they'll go to Lennox and go to Basque, which has got a lot of money put into it. They will move on. They will not come here. And and I I very, I feel very strongly that the businesses will suffer. Um, there's not a lot of locals that can afford to pay two hundred dollars in a restaurant like you would spend at some of the places places on Main Street. It's a very expensive town to do business in. It's a very expensive town to shop in, and a lot of locals just don't do it. So I think the businesses, the local businesses will struggle. I think that the winter economy will struggle greatly. In particular, the off season economy will struggle. Um, people just don't travel like they used to, and we need to support these people coming into our community because I really feel strongly they will move on and will go to another town.
Thank you very much. Um, people continue to raise their hand even, obviously, they weren't listening. We're gonna cut this off in a few minutes, but I will continue to get some more people's input. Uh, Gabriel, Gabrielle Senza?
Okay, hi, thank you. Um, yeah, there's so much to that goes into a a situation like this and and, um, there's so many points. I'm really glad this isn't like the once and done discussion about it. And I really like that. There's a lot of discussion about how can we think about this creatively? How can we look at the long term effects? How can we look at the unintended consequences of decisions that are being made? Um, you know, I'm sure Lee's turned up a lot of of really good research and studies um in the U S. And then also, if you look at what's happened in Europe, it's just massive amounts of very difficult situations where people have lost their homes. I'll keep the conversation based on Great Barrington because that's what we're talking about. But I would encourage a- all of us or anyone who's listening and thinking about this to to expand our our reach in terms of looking at other scenarios, what's worked, what hasn't worked, what are the consequences? So the points that I'd just like to make tonight, one of the most important things, and I've heard a few people mention this, like, the restaurants and the businesses will go, um, you know, go under. Well, the important thing to realize right now is that the restaurants have, I don't know if you paid attention through the summer, restaurants were closing because they didn't have staff. They don't have staff because there's no place for the staff to for to live. So what's gonna turn, what's going to shut the businesses down is lack of service workers, not Airbnb people and not the lack of Airbnb people. It's, you know, this is an important thing to think about. So we really need to, um, be realistic about what that problem is. And then the other thing is, um, you know, if there are a few shorter, a fewer amount of Airbnbs available, we're not talking about cutting all Airbnbs out of this. This is not a bylaw that says no more Airbnbs, period, like Berlin tried to do. It's not, that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about trying to keep speculators from buying up the homes without any, you know, chance for local people to purchase the homes. And that's the problem. That's one of the problems that we really need to be trying to um prevent from happening here. And then the, um, the really sad thing is watching people being evicted from their homes. I have so many friends that are being evicted from their apartments right here in Great Barrington, and there's no place around. And I have two people working with me. And I said, you guys are really lucky to have apartments. They're not living in Great Barrington, but they're like, yeah, absolutely. There's not, there's a major shortage, we know this, but it's real. It's really real. And the only way they were able to find their apartments is because their worker, their bosses happened to know someone before they put it on the market. So it's not a black and white situation, and it's really important that none of us feel like, oh, it has to be this or it has to be that. This do, this requires a lot of thinking, a lot of creative thinking, and a lot of like, as someone said, thinking outside the box, but really research, really research.
Thank, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kathy Plungis? Go ahead, Kathy. You are unmuted. Kathy, you're now muted.
Hi, Kathy Plungis, yes?
Yes.
Okay, Kathy Plungis, six Hebert Drive, Great Barrington. Born and raised here, worked here, raised my family. I'm still here. Um, I'm terribly concerned about this as a resident and forty three years in my home on Hebert's Drive. I could rent it up short term for a hundred eighty days. If I choose to become a second homeowner, it seems I'm going to be limited up to seventy five days. Any of our second homeowners have no say in this. They can give their opinions at meetings like this. But it seems we are now going after the second homeowners more and more to squeeze whatever money we can out of them. If we have a potential eighty homes that could possibly come on the market for short term rentals, I think if we look at the price those homes sold for, we, they would never be renting at a fee low enough for the workforce to be able to rent them. Um, Lee has done a tremendous amount of background work in this, but going after this um short term rental is not the way to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Three more to go. Janice Robbins. Just unmute yourself, please, Janice.
Okay, Janice Robbins, one forty eight Offord Road. I don't know if this is something that's doable at all, but if the concern is people coming in, buying property just as investors going forward, is there any way to put some type of contingency on sales that somebody buying a property could not do short term rentals for X amount of time, whether it's their first year of ownership or first two years of ownership? And maybe that would dissuade potential buyers who are just looking to purchase for an investment and that maybe would leave more um, homes available for people who are looking to live here. Just a thought.
Thank you very much. Uh, Dan Wild?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thanks. Hi, Steve. Hi, Brandy. Um, so my my big concern is that that I see short term rental properties, uh, gobbling up long term rental uh, uh, lo- long term rental properties. And you seem to be talking about short term rentals and property owners. And my concern is about the lack of long term rentals. And having just seen a couple of properties that were brought up and evicted, uh, long term renters who, long term tenants who live here, raise their families here, pay taxes here and now are are up, now are panicked trying to find a place to live. And there are two other properties that I know of where the uh, long term rental units were converted into uh, single family homes. Uh, and the other is converted into Airbnb uh revenue properties. I think that we need to do something about uh, uh, we're restricting something that that stomps all over the long term renters who are already here and being evicted. And if we can do something that will prevent multifamily houses from being converted, I think that would be a big move in achieving something uh, uh, that has to do with short term rentals.
Thank you, Dan. Oh, go ahead. Go ahead. I thought you were done.
And the other thing is, no one has really talked about what the impact of short term rentals is on a neighborhood. You have people who, um, who are coming and going all the time. You don't know who's, who's living next door if you happen to be in that neighborhood. There's an additional amount of traffic. Uh, it seems to me that that upsets the, the quality and the, um, uh, uh, positive tenure of living in community, and that should really be taken into as a factor.
Thank you, Anne. Last would be John L.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Terrific. Uh, my wife spoke earlier, so I just wanna get that-
Name and address, please.
Oh, yes, uh, John Lundner. Uh, my house is at nine Francis Avenue. Uh, I believe I'm just down the road from, uh, Ed. Is that correct? Are you familiar with the house, Ed?
Uh, I don't know which house, but I know where Francis is, it's down the road.
But it's, it's the corner house on Francis Avenue?
Oh, the one nice one that was just fixed up.
Oh, yes, thank you very much. Um, that was all done with local contractors, obviously. Um, and I'm curious if anybody has spoken to any of the local business owners about these, uh, proposed bylaws.
Um, really, th- this point is just for you to make your comments. We will, we'll put that on a list. We'll put that on a list to talk about at the next meeting.
Okay, I, I just wanna make the comment, um, that, uh, should I have, should these bylaws be enacted? Obviously, my hospitality business would no longer be viable. And that would, again, force me to either sell or rent long-term. If I were to rent long-term, that comes with a whole different set of legal ramifications because in essence, I become a landlord rather than being in the hospitality business. So I just wanna make sure that that's, that's clear, that there, that there are many, many different legal ramifications of, of, uh, of, uh, being a landlord rather than being in the hospitality business. Um, I would say that, uh, I've got a four-point-nine rating out of five on Airbnb, and that factors in value and cleanliness. I don't think that, uh, you know, Ed said that the nice house on the corner got fixed up really nicely 'cause it was really a problem. And I don't see how I've negatively impacted the community at all. I think, uh, by hiring everybody local, be it the cleaning service, my contractors, my electricians, the garbage service, my gardener, um, that puts a lot of money into the community. Should I, should these laws be enacted? There's no doubt. I would sell my house and I would fire all those contractors and vendors. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Garfield, did you have something you wanted to add quickly?
I'll, I'll wait till you do next, man.
Okay, that's fine. So, um, right now, we have fifty-three attendees and thirteen panelists, for those keeping track at home. Um, Brandy, I think it's time we adjourn the joint meeting. And you and I will talk, uh, when, when we're going to meet again, which will be, I'm sure shortly, but-
Right, I agree. Thank you for coordinating this and, and good luck with your, your further meeting. Appreciate you guys making the time tonight so that we could start this conversation.
Thank you.
All right. So do we need a motion to adjourn?
Good, can I just make one comment, Brandy, before? It's a quick comment. I just wanna, I just want to, you know, make it, make everybody aware that if this in fact is gonna, uh, be prepared for town meeting twenty-twenty-two, this needs to move pretty quickly. Because we, you know, we've got public hearings and discussions and stuff to, to take care of, so anyway, that's it.
Yeah, thank you, Patrick. So, um-
I'll, I'll adjourn the planning board meeting, or do you wanna adjourn?
No, that's perfect.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to adjourn the planning board portion of this meeting. Do I have that motion?
It'll move, yes.
Thank you, Pedro. Do we have a second?
Second.
Was that Malcolm seconding? Thank you, Malcolm. Um, so we'll do roll call vote. Jeremy?
Aye.
Malcolm?
Aye.
Jonathan?
Goodbye.
Pedro?
Aye.
Brandy, aye. Thank you again, select board. Have a good evening.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.